Think about CHANCE. This is just an example of what it might look like in a classroom. CHANCE and DSC are for the classroom teachers at that level. It can be extended across the school, it can be extended school-wide. But ideally, it's used at the classroom level because it's just, it's written for them. So when we think about this, our guidelines for success would be those traits, those values that we want to instill in our students while we have our time with them. So, for example, be responsible, be respectful, be safe, persevere, those are all values and traits that we would hope to instill in them. From there, we extend it down and we have our classroom rules. And these are objective. You can see it, you can hear it, you can do it. It's repeatable, measurable. So follow directions for the first time. You're telling them exactly what they need to do and it's something you can hold them accountable for no matter what activities going on in the classroom. From there, we can extend down to identify routines and procedures. So how should students enter the classroom? How should they, what should they do after they return from an absence? How do you wrap up at the end of the day? These are all routines and procedures that we do the same way every single time, no matter what's going on. And then you get into CHANCE. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the acronym here in a minute. With the expectations for activities, you're looking at teacher-directed instruction, cooperative group work, test-taking, independent seat work. All of those are then defined because it just kinda depends. During whole group, your expectations are gonna look a little bit different than they would during a test. And so you're defining what does that look like for each of those different activities. You have expectations for transitions. So how do you go to lunch or specials? How do you clean up after an activity? How do you enter the class or leave the class? So you're taking all of your expectations to a more finite level to set kids up to be successful. You're telling them ahead of time, this is what it's gonna take and I can help you get there and I can teach you how to do it, but I can also hold you accountable for it. So when we think about the philosophy, dignity and respect, teaching the skills. So all students have to be treated with dignity and respect. We're not humiliating them or embarrassing them in any way. We're teaching the skills and behaviors that are gonna help them be successful. Focusing on those positive interactions, so your motivation and responsibility should be encouraged through those positive action, interactions. We're building relationships and reports with our students. And then those teachable moments. There are always some teachable moments and we all learn from those. Student misbehavior represents that teaching opportunity. So instead of getting on to them and punishing them for, "You messed up, you made a mistake." Okay, let's teach you how to do it the right way. If they're consistently messing up on the same behavior over and over and over, that usually shows you that it's an acquisition deficit where they just don't have that skill to be able to perform it in the moment. So we gotta teach them. Now, CHANCE is based on 30 years of research, over 30 years of research. And they're looking at those different variables that you have to, that affect behavior. So these are things that we control no matter if you're in the classroom, if you're at home, if you're with other people. You're looking at the structure. So how do you structure it for success? So it's the way the classroom's organized, and the setting, the schedule, the routines, the procedures, the quality of instruction. This all has a huge impact on student behavior. Effective teachers carefully structure their classrooms in ways that promote that responsible behavior. And the T is for teach. We're gonna teach our expectations. Effective teachers overtly teach students how to be successful, how to follow the rules, how to follow the expectations in all situations. The O is for observing and supervising and monitoring. So we monitor student behavior by physically circulating and scanning all parts of the classroom frequently. And we use that meaningful data to observe student behavior in objective ways and then monitor that trend over time. So it allows us to kinda take emotion out of the equation because we can see it, we have a picture. It is going well. It may not feel like it's going well in the moment, but data shows that it's actually going pretty good. Interactions. We're interacting positively with students. So when they're behaving responsibly, responsibly, they receive attention, they receive specific descriptive feedback on their behavior. Teachers focus more time, attention, and energy on acknowledging their responsible behavior rather than responding to the misbehavior. We all know that when we have those warm fuzzies and we have a good day because somebody complimented us or gave us kudos for something, that boosts our self-esteem and our confidence that we can continue to do that. And that's one of the biggest pieces within CHANCE. And then the C is for correcting fluently. So we're pre-planning our responses to those common annoying misbehaviors you might have in a classroom. We plan ahead so that we can respond in a brief, calm, and consistent manner. We increase the chance, chances that the flow of instruction is not interrupted. And we teach those replacement behaviors for the students that exhibit those chronic misbehaviors. Now here's what we know it isn't. CHANCE is not a canned program. It is a framework. It is a guide to the decisions that teachers make within their classrooms. And we're using the evidence-based practices that have been proven to work. It doesn't tell us what to implement, it gives us the tools and says, "Okay, now you do what works for you." It's not a bandwagon, it's a commitment. So you're committing to doing that little extra front-loading in the beginning so that you can have the, you can reap the benefit a little bit later. It's not just a product, it's a process. You can't say, "I tried it, it didn't work." All you can say is, "The things I've tried so far haven't worked, so the next thing I'm gonna try is." All teachers aren't expected to have the same CHANCE expectations, but every teacher is different. We all have different personalities, we have different tolerance levels, we teach different subjects, different curricula. So the expectations are gonna look different depending on the classroom that you're in. And it's not just a poster. We're using these as a script for providing that feedback. It's posted. And then you have something to read on the wall that says, you know, "Thank you, John, for doing such a great job at staying in your seat. You noticed that, I noticed that. It's super important to stay in your seat." And that's one of the expectations we have during this activity. The expectations create that common language, which then extends school-wide because everybody uses a CHANCE language. That's where the school-wide component comes in. Now here's what we know it is. Teachers make, this is a guide to help teachers implement a proactive and positive approach to how they handle behavior in their classroom. It's how to be effective in making decisions about managing behavior. It's a process, it's a way of thinking. What's going well? Okay, now what can I tweak to make it go even better? We're using data to drive the decisions that we're making in the classroom. It's a common, it creates that common language among staff. The goal is to be consistent and repetitive. It's a verb. They've started saying, "Okay, let's CHAMP out this activity." And it's also an hack name. CHANCE is not one more thing on your plate, it is the plate. It is the foundation that allows us to set kids up to be successful in the classroom instead of playing the match game. So when you think about the acronym, conversation. So during whole group activities, you're gonna tell kids, you know, can students talk to each other during this time? If so, about what? With whom? How many people can be involved? How many, how long can a conversation last? We're taking our expectations to a more finite level depending on the activities that are going on. So it's gonna look a little different between small group, then whole group, then tests. For H, that stands for help. How do students get their questions answered? They should, for example, they should try to get answers without the teacher help. If no one can help at the table, they can go stand in the question box. If you have to wait for help, stand quietly in the square. So you're saying ahead of time, if you need help, this is what you need to do to get that help. How do they get your attention? If they have to wait, what should they do while they wait? The activity, what is, what is the objective? What is the task? What is the end product that you're going to get out of it? Teacher-directed, working on tasks and activities presented by the teacher. You have verbal and written responses to teacher-presented tasks. For a small group, it might be, students will complete as much of the assignment as possible during the given time. If you finish before time is up, read quietly or finish a previous assignment at your desk. Movement. Can they get up and move? If so, what can they get up and do? Can they get up and go get a drink? Get up, go to the restroom? Can they sharpen their pencil? Get a Kleenex, get materials? You're saying ahead of time, teaching them ahead of time. So that's gonna take a lot of that interruption out of your instruction because you've already taught them, yes, it's perfectly fine if you get up and go get a drink of water and this is the procedure that we follow for going to do that. And then P stands for participation. What behavior shows that students are fully participating in the activity? For example, looking at the paper, writing or doing what the task requires, talking only to those in your group, et cetera. What behaviors show that students are not participating? Talking to other students, getting out of your seat, not looking at the paper, giving answers instead of help? All of those are how you drill it down a little bit and you say, "Where's, where's that almost? This is what it takes for you to be successful." And then the S stands for success. So what will success look like if students complete the activity? They'll feel good about getting work done, maybe they don't have homework, they understand what's taught. All of those are the success that comes out of following those expectations. So our goal of CHANCE is to reduce those classroom disruptions and office referrals because we establish clear expectations with logical and fair responses to misbehavior. We improve the classroom climate. Teachers have, they get to spend less time disciplining and more time teaching. They build more trusting relationships with their students. Everybody likes to come to work now. We see an increase in student on-task behavior, so teachers are learning, are learning the tools to motivate students to do their best. And we're affecting that motivation with what we control. And then we establish that respectful and civil interaction with each other in how we teach them how to behave responsibly. So we're teaching some of those pro-social behaviors that are gonna help them be successful, not only in school, but in life. And that is CHANCE in a nutshell. I know it goes way deeper than that, but. So you guys have questions? Um, it started, we had a couple of schools that started, I wanna say three years ago, almost four. And it was one of the schools when I became a behavior consultant that was starting the book study. And then they kinda went and ran with it. And then this opened up doors for me. So I, I was a part of that book study. And then was given the opportunity to apply for this and got it. And so I've just kinda taken it and run with it. The biggest thing that I, I try and tell people is, there's no set procedure to how you do this. You do it for how it works for you. So different buildings do it a different way and begin in different parts just depending on what their building you are.
Well, this is an appropriate question for you and your presentation, but when we CHAMP this thing out in a, in a building, there's a lot of reasons why kids behave the way they do. Some of them have to do with being on the spectrum or, you know, or they're an audible learner rather than a visual learner, things like that. How, how do we identify that? Is that, does CHANCE as a process sort of help the teacher think through explanations for the paper?
Yes. So we think about, it, the very last chapter of CHANCE talks about correction. And so you're really getting into what's the payoff of the behavior? Is it they're trying to access something? And if so, these are some things that you can try and do. Or maybe the payoff for them is they get out of something. Or, you know, they avoid attention, or they get away from that overstimulation with sensory needs. It's saying, if you can determine the payoff, then you can figure out what kinds of things to tweak within your plan. But it all goes back to that function. There's always a role that behavior plays in everything. And you have to figure out, okay, what, what did I get out of it? Or what do they not, you know, what do they get out, get away from? And then we can put those interventions in place to kinda support that. With kids that are on the spectrum, there, it's highly visual, visual, very routine, very systematic. So it really benefits them too because they learn that, okay, I, I can expect this, I know when this is gonna end and when this next activity is gonna begin. I know how long it's gonna last. And so it kind of eases a lot of that anxiety that kids might have. And especially in a younger ones who may really don't know how long something's gonna last or they haven't quite developed that concept of time yet.
Tim, do you have any questions?
Tim, do you have any questions on this presentation?
I just wondered if you've been able to get a sense from the teachers or feedback from the teachers on how effective they feel the program is for them?
This framework is very, is very effective and they see the value in it. I think it's, the overwhelming piece is the planning. So how do I, how do I get through all of this? Because it is a lot. And when you think about behavior, behavior is so personal and it causes so much emotion. It is so hard for us to step out of that. And that's just human nature. So I'm gonna plan ahead and that's partly my job, going in to coach those buildings is to ease some of that frustration and anxiety and help them think through that process on, okay, here's how we can do this. Okay, what's gonna work for you? What, what additional things? What assistance do you need? But I think all in all, the biggest piece of it that's the hardest is seeing everything that you have to put in place. It's just a little overwhelming for them.
Does, does it have a component to behaviors like that, so that the students don't get to those priorities?
Well, that goes into different levels of like screening, sort of screening ahead of time to identify those kids that are at risk for developing some of those more problematic behaviors. But it, within CHANCE, yes, there is a behavior intervention plan component where you're identifying the replacement behavior. What do you wanna replace the negative behavior, the target behavior with? And then what plan are you gonna put in place to teach them those skills? So there, it's a very small piece of it. It doesn't go near in-depth that I do when I'm doing a functional assessment-based intervention with a team, looking at specific or even just regular kids that are involved in the SAT process.
I just wonder if we'd ever done maybe a survey or assessment to see how teachers feel about administrative support versus design? Just overall what their feeling is on that?
I have not done anything like that.
Just because you're first, talked about the statistics and how the wonderful, you know, wonderful year. And I just wonder how our teachers are feeling against?
I think that's good information to know. And I don't know, is anything like that addressing client surveys or anything?
Yeah, there's questions in the survey. We've rewritten that, we've given that this year, we're gonna give this trend. We're gonna do it twice a year, KSB, a little bit on it for them. So that's something we're planning on putting out this year. But that is, it's already been asked in our client surveys. And quote question, there's a question, but there's some continuing.
Well, that might be some other interesting data. Do you want to start? Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank Lys, Lys has done a really good job with this. And I always wanna call it a program, but I get trouble when I do, so I have to remember it's a framework. When I started in this job, one of the questions was, are we gonna make everybody new CHANCE? And we talked about that and we really felt like, rather than make that a district initiative, it really needed to be something that we put out there that was support, that was available for buildings if they felt there was value in it and they had a need for it. And this way, very busy doing CHANCE because we didn't make the requirement, but the, but the buildings keep her very busy doing this because we're seeing value in it. And that's important. And so as she said, there's a lot of buildings in different places doing different things. And, and I think for right now, that's okay. They're evaluating their needs. And, and some are further along, some even incorporate more of it. Mr. Hogan, I know with our new teachers, you know, one of the toughest things for new teachers is that classroom management component. And this is some great support, so this is a part of the entering process and the training that we're building in for them. So I, I feel like folks are doing a very good job really using the strengths of this framework and, and getting it to the people that have, thanks for everybody involved.
Appreciate it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Knight, do you have some information for us?
I have one page, CHANCE. Uh, thanks. Steve, wanted to kinda give you guys an update. Steve missed his mark by about 20 minutes, but I had to be here anyway, so it didn't matter, Steve.
Thanks, man.
Where we're at today, well, we had our steering committee meeting today. We had a, we meet the first Monday of every month. We had a hundred thousand dollar gift coming today, so we're pretty pumped up about that. That puts us at four hundred and three thousand dollars and two hundred and twenty from a thirty-nine dome. So we're in our quiet phase of the campaign, no one really knows about it. You guys get special treatment just because of our partnership with you guys, so. Tell you, I've been doing a couple of reports, but some people won't, we can tell you, no, just kidding. But, uh, no, it's been great to have so far. We had two gifts coming today, a thousand dollar and a hundred thousand. So we still got, we've only talked to 10 of our 28 leadership donors that we've kinda identified. So we still got 18 donors to talk to there. We have over one billion dollars in requests right now, so if half that comes in, that puts us at nine hundred thousand, which our kinda timeline, once we hit nine hundred thousand, we'll start a dome project. My goal, unofficial goal, is to have that dome up and running for KH in September so those girls can play volleyball in the dome, practicing volleyball so they're able to work that moment, early mornings, staying ready and doing all that. So that's my goal, is to have that done, ready in place. Once we hit the nine hundred thousand, it'll only take 16 weeks in the time I pay the dome people to have the dome up and running. So, so we still got some foundation work and some other stuff to work out in the soil work and all that. So we're getting ready to start forming our facility task force underneath that. Jeanne and Steve know all about that, they were on our board, they know how we, we kinda sub things and board committees and all that, so. In fact, I think Jeanne was on the marketing committee last time for the mastwork, so. So that's kinda where we're at today. I can't say we're sure to be up there by the fall, but that's kinda my goal, so. Any questions for me or any concerns? I think we had a timeline of April to kinda get back to you guys, but we just started the fundraising, so started the fundraising. Feasibility study, we did all that. We started our capital gifts with the family division, which was the board and the staff and the steering committee in November, December. And then we just kicked off January, February, and March for leadership, so. We're a little bit behind where we wanted to be, but, you know, you never wanna jump into it until you make sure it's in place and in and of. Any concerns on the April timeline or anything we need to be aware of there or you guys still okay with that?
Is there any track around the, in the inside?
Yeah, there'll be a walking running track, a three-lane around the three courts. And then on the flip side, one whole, the whole end section will be our gymnastics and cheerleading program, all their equipment. And then the one whole side will be all functional fitness stuff. It's actually gonna be called enhancement stuff. That's the new buzzword. I've been working with Mike Brunger, someone I remember, Mike Brunger, he was a seventeen year strength and conditioning coach for the Spurs. Just moved back to town, so we've been working with him on some programs and ideas and some stuff, so we're gonna get some of that stuff here and that's gonna turn the whole east side. Pullback jumping pits, stuff like that. They'll have an accessory building that'll be open year-round. Like these beautiful days right now, they can be out there playing soccer, but there's no place to go to the bathroom out there, you know? So when we have our building up there, they'll be able to go to the bathroom and open all the time. Did we go? I don't think I said any of these so's. My wife told me not to say any so's, but I don't think I said any of these so's this time, so I think I passed.
There's three, yeah. I just saw her three, just now.
There was three? Aw, man. All right, I was gonna give a shout-out to the video coordinator too, so. Thanks, guys.
She's jealous.
Yeah, she got to feel it last time.
Basically, last time we had the, we had the shared information with you about the long-range facility community recommendation to the, the projects to replace the turf at Forest Good Middle School. It's, it's no longer safe for us to allow contact sports to practice or compete there. And we have a cost for that of, I think, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The facility community recommendation was to apply any remaining bond funds to that. And any additional up to that amount would be paid out for a capital outlay. That right around three hundred thousand dollars of bond funds. Lots of information last time, you know, the, the spreadsheet I think Chuck and AJ put together for you demonstrating the maintenance costs. And I wanna share one little thing with you that I found interesting. I think Chuck estimated about twelve thousand dollars a year in water expenses. And at first, that kinda sets you back, but when I think about my monthly watering bill, watering my yard, it's of course not quite in that area, but I don't have a football field either, but in KSB's publication, their February 24th one, they quote, "In nineteen ninety, in the nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four school year, Wichita Public Schools consumed two-hundred-and-eighty-three million gallons of water at a cost of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Last year, it used eighty-one million gallons of water." So they really, they really improved their consumption, cut it down by almost three and a half times. But, but the cost was seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. So their cost almost doubled and their consumption was three and a half times less. So I think the spreadsheet they gave you projected cost out at least 20 years, but it didn't increase that cost of water at all. And I think that might be naive to think that 20 years from now, the cost of water is gonna be what it is and whether or not water is even available. So I, I know it's a difficult decision, I know it's a lot of money, but our recommendation is to proceed with the project.
Does anyone have any comments?
To me, the decision is sort of already been made, given a couple of facts. First of all, I totally agree with Mr. Chris that it doesn't make any sense to convert that to a, to, to grass, to non-astro turf or whatever they call it, to grass, sod. Sod was the word I was looking for. That, that just isn't going backwards. But with that said, we have a high school, a beautiful high school that was constructed in part with the bond funds. And I was, I recently learned that the HVAC system up there was never properly launched. I don't know what the explanation is, and I don't know why we're forty years down the road and that not being solved. But two different engineering firms, our best estimate that I think we learned was to get that down and brought back up so that it functions properly, is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So to me, if we don't do that, from the numbers I looked at, it looked like it's gonna cost our general fund to even try to heat the tour job that's happening today with that new high school. But I usually think it's a brand-new facility, you know, our expectation was that that was going to be, well, a state-of-the-art school for, for its design. And if we have a problem with that environment, that learning environment in the classrooms there at the high school that is gonna sap our general fund because of the inefficient HVAC system, we gotta fix that. And if we've gotta fix that and it's gonna cost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we've gotta spend that bond money. I mean, it's the expectation of the community, I think, to finish the job. With that said, we've got this other facility and this recommendation to go to Memorial Stadium. And it's a beautiful facility, I think we've got to think as a community about keeping it up. From the standpoint of Horace Good being able to play soccer and football, they're already playing for a practice field right next door and the grass is already there. And we're gonna water it a moment. So there's a practice facility right on campus. Also, a few blocks down the road is another stadium that's also irrigated and maintained that's even better than the KH. So if the facilities nearby are available to the middle school for that two-year program, I think we've got options for waiting. Maybe having another fundraiser campaign for the old memorial stadium and all the facilities that are there that Mr. Chris described. I don't think we should spend money to go back to this, but I don't think we have the money to spend on, on that re-astro turf, even if it's a high school. And the high school, we need, as I said, sap in our general fund, it delays the classroom. And to ignore it, I think, would not consistent with the expectations. So that's, that's my perspective.
Was my understanding of, of the, of the, of the, to that we were planning, I mean, I'm recently, I'm very aware of the issues that was, we were planning to add to the parties that are involved and to try to address those issues with them.
I mean, to me, that is critical. I don't know why we haven't done it yet. But until we get the problem, it's my concern that we spend bond money knowing that we've got unfinished business there.
Is it not correct that the bond money, the helping of this, you know, just the high school? That is correct, it's a qualified, the term could be a qualified N S, and we're qualified and we're pretty sure about that. It would be true to me that we have, we have a number of expenses. At least both of those were qualified, I mean, it's more bond than it. And since the, the issue at the high school is being addressed, we don't know the resolution of that, but we are investigating the alternatives that are available to us through the contractor and the board.
That's correct.
And our need, our need with the turf base is, is a little bit more, I guess, immediate, right? You know, I know you have mentioned that maybe it's, was it general stadium or?
Yeah, general stadium's right nearby and I've got pictures of that, we've got, it's accessible for games and then unfortunately, I've got that practice field right next to Memorial Stadium that actually has a well on it as well. And so there's, the facilities are there to accomplish the program. We've got to support the kids in the program. I just don't see the dollars, you know, and the given choices that, you know, we have to make as a school.
What do you perceive, what do you perceive, or what do you suggest we do with the existing turf or existing stadium?
Well, to an extent, it's usable, continue to use it. You can't do track events on that state, that last state.
Well, you can use the track.
You couldn't.
You can't do contact sports on the field.
Can't play soccer, can't practice soccer.
Right. Yeah, that's a, that's a challenge for that facility. There, we, as a community, when we built the new high school and we were going to opt out of the line-up memorial stadium, we would never know the high school, a brand-new stadium there. And we used the bond money to do that and addition of facilities. So that was a choice that was made. Where we have that high school as an operation corporate, I mean, our job's not done. It's very difficult to come back and say, even though there's a timing benefit in considering re-astro turf in Memorial Stadium, because in another five years, we're gonna have to consider that high school. And, and it's better to stagger those things out, if you have the money. The challenge here is we have unfinished business at a high school that is inefficiently being heated and cooled. And that's at a cost on our general fund, which right out of, you know, what we have available for teachers and students in classrooms. It's a brand-new high school. Why would we kick that can down the road in favor of new turf in Memorial Stadium? And at least for a year, or however long it takes us to do the fundraising and pull it together for re-astro turf in Memorial Stadium, we at least have turf there for the kids to play mental practice. That's a, that's a reassuring thing, given the difficult choices.
I do wanna clarify one thing, I don't know that it has to be an either-or decision. There's money available in our capital outlay budget, both of these are capital projects. And I just learned about this potential concern that the facilities committee was discussing Wednesday night with the mechanical systems of the high school. Whether there's options for us to, to engage the contractor to take care of these problems that will cost us nothing, or whether there's gonna be a cost to us in making sure those mechanical systems are functioning correctly. We do have a capital outlay budget every year that has dollars available to do that. We also have bond dollars that would be available to do either of these projects. So I, I believe the facilities committee recommended doing this project and they continue to study the problem at the high school. But it's not a matter of only being able to do one or the other. It's a matter of, do you wanna proceed with the...